Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pennsylvania County Planning Commission meeting September the 3rd, 2019. Roll call Ms. Meese, Ms. Henderson, Mr. Haymore.
Present.
Mr. Horn.
Present.
Mr. Stowe.
Present.
Dr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
And myself. Let the record show that it is six present, two absent. Will everyone please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. All citizens of the United States of America will join me in our pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No one has signed up. Does anyone in the audience tonight wish to address the commissioners on anything other than what's on the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if you could remind them to cut on their mics.
You did alright.
I had. Has everybody's got the mic on? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stowe, second by Mr. Haymore, the agenda be approved as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed, six, four, two, absent. Approval of the minutes, August the 6th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the minutes as presented in the package.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Stowe, the minutes be approved as presented in the package. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's passed, six, four, two, absent. The chairman's report. I'd like to welcome our chairman of our supervisors, Mr. Joe Davis. And we also, we have Mr. Griffith who represents the Tunstall District on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We welcome you to our meeting tonight. I have a thank you note to dear friends, thank you for the beautiful arrangement of flowers. I deeply appreciate your concern for Pat and me during this past difficult years of his life. It is comforting to know I am surrounded with caring, supportive friends. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals, that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interests of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At 7:05, case R-19-024 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19-024, Plyler Properties have petitioned to rezone 34.398 acres located off Waterlock Road in the Callens-Grettna Election District from A-1 Agricultural District to RPD Residential Plan Unit Development for future development. Once the properties are rezoned to RPD, all uses listed under Section 35294 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Eric Plyler is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Plyler, will you come forward? Good evening and welcome.
Yes, good evening to you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it. As Karen had said, my name is Eric Plyler and I am president of Plyler Properties Incorporated. We are a real estate development corporation at the lake. And for many years, we've been developing a community called Sanctuary Bay at the lake. We started around 2006, very successful at the time, and then the real estate market crashed. So, we kinda got slowed down a little bit, but luckily, we got in around 2006 and sold about 90% of the home sites in that section and very successful with that. It's a very nice community. If y'all been out there, it's home sites are, you know, sold from anywhere from $200,000 to we sold one home site for over 1.3 million. The homes in there are valued from $700,000 to over 3.4 million. So, it's a very nice community. I think it's an asset for Pennsylvania County. Our proposal tonight, as you can see from the plans that we've submitted, is we have an adjoining piece of property that's actually owned by Franklin Real Estate Corporation, which is a subsidiary of AEP. We've been trying to purchase that property for many years unsuccessfully, excuse me, and now we have a contract on the property and would like to develop it. Our plans call for two new sections, one called Sanctuary Village and one called Sanctuary You know, we hope to extend the, you know, the good development practices that we had in Sanctuary Bay into this new section with streetlights, water system, and, you know, quality construction throughout the neighborhood. In short, we're hoping to, you know, expand our footprint for Pennsylvania County. It's the last, you know, major tract of land in Pennsylvania County on the lake that's available to develop. So, we looking to be a good partner with Pennsylvania County and, you know, ask for your support. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? No one has signed up to speak or fall against this cases. Anyone here came in late, did not have opportunity to sign up, wish to address this case? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At 7:08, case R-19-024, public hearing is closed. Oh, Ms. Meese is not here, so Mr. Dudley?
I'll take care of it. Okay, in case R-19-024, rezoning request from A-1 to RPD, and I do recommend to the board that this be passed.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Haymore, that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors the rezoning of the land from A-1 to RPD. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll for the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese? Ms. Henderson? Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R-19-024, by vote of six, four, two, absent, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that zoning be changed from A-1 to RPD. At 7:09, case R-19-025 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19-025, Roy and Phyllis Nicholson have petitioned to rezone 13.72 acres located on Weatherford Drive in the Stanton River Election District from RE Residential Estates District to A-1 Agricultural District to make the zoning consistent with the adjacent parcel zoned A-1. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Roy Nicholson is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Nicholson, will you come forward, please? Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you'd like to add of what Ms. Hayes has already presented to us?
No, sir, I believe she's covered it.
Any questions for? No one has signed up for this cases. Anyone came in late, wish to address the commissioners on this? Thank you, sir. At 7:10, case R-19-025 is closed to public hearing. Oh, Mr. Dudley?
Yeah, that's me, again. Mr. Chairman, I did, this is in my district, I did go by this location and I talked to the gentleman today on the phone and I spoke to him some here this evening, and my recommendation is case R-19-025, rezoning requests, RE to A-1, recommend to the Board of Supervisors that we do pass this and rezone this.
Second, the motion.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by Mr. Horn, recommend to the Board of Supervisors the rezoning of the land from RE to A-1. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll for the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese? Ms. Henderson? Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R-19-025, by vote of six present, two absent, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that zoning be changed from RE to A-1. At 7:12, case R-19-026, open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19-026, Russell Eads has petitioned to rezone 1.256 acres from MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park District to R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District and 4.533 acres from MHP Residential Manufactured House and Park District to A-1 Agricultural District to bring the existing use into compliance and to be consistent with his adjacent properties zoned A-1. The parcels are located on Grit Road in the Stanton River Election District. Once the properties are rezoned to R-1 and A-1, all uses listed under Section 35222 and 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Eads is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Eads? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
Do you have anything you'd like to add of what Ms. Hayes has already?
Just need to get a rezone to, I need to sell their home. I need to re, get that rezoned because we won't finance it as it's a zone, mobile home park. The companies won't finance it. So, it needs to be rezoned so I can sell the home. And then the other 4.0 acres, need to have that rezoned to match the other land in area.
Any questions for Mr. Eads? No one has signed up to speak to this. Has anyone came in late, wish to address the commissioners on this case? If not, thank you, Mr. Eads.
Thank you, Ms. Eads.
At 7:13, case R-19-026 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Dudley?
Am I the only one doing something tonight?
Yeah.
I wish.
I did visit Mr. Eads' location and honestly, what he's just trying to do is get it back to how it should be in the first place. Is that right? And so, anyway, he's a good neighbor. He's just two or three doors down and he's always, always been a very good neighbor. Reason is because we don't see each other that much and that makes a good neighbor. But anyway, case R-19-026, zoning requests from MHP to R-1 and a MHP to A-1. I make a motion that we send this forward to the Board of Supervisors, that we recommend rezoning these two properties.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, is that a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Stowe, recommend to the Board of Supervisors that zoning be changed from MHP to R-1 and MHP to A-1. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll for the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese? Ms. Henderson? Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R-19-026, by vote of six, four, two, absent, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that zoning be changed from MHP to R-1 and MHP to A-1. At 7:15, case R-19-027, open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case R-19-027, Jay and Lydia Landrum have petitioned to rezone a total of 62.45 acres located off Slaughter Avenue in the Westover Election District from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow for subdivision of the property for family. Once the properties are rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Lori and John Tuart are here to represent the petition.
Mr. Chairman, if the Tuarts are not here, I have spoken with the Landrum, it's in my district, by the way.
Yes, sir.
The Landrum had a condo rented at Myrtle Beach and they probably wish they didn't. They were hovering on the way back home. This is, I'll get back on my soapbox, this is a perfect example of where there should have been a suit filed for malfeasance in office when it was rezoned to residential, 65 acres. Residential is a joke. But anyhow, that, this strictly for the family, the son and daughter, I think, are gonna build a house on it. If you wanna go to a nice driving range behind his house, he's got a 300-yard driving range on this piece of property, beautiful place. So, based on that, case number R-19?
Let me close it first. No one has signed up to speak to this case. Anyone come in late, wish to, did not have opportunity to sign up, wish to address? If not, at 7:17, case R-19-027 is closed to public hearing. Now, Mr. Haymore will?
Mr. Chairman, case number R-19-027, I move that we move to the Board of Supervisors to rezone it from R-1 to A-1, Mr. Chairman.
Second, the motion.
Motion by Mr. Haymore, second by Mr. Stowe, recommend to the Board of Supervisors zoning be changed from R-1 to A-1. Any discussions? If not, Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll for the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese? Ms. Henderson? Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Case R-19-027, by vote of six, four, two, absent, recommend to the Board of Supervisors that zoning be changed from R-1 to A-1. At 7:18, case S-19-010 is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes.
Case S-19-010, J.D. Shelton and others have petitioned for a special use permit on a total of 450 acres located on Old Richmond Road in the Dan River Election District for recreational uses ATV trails. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, the Sheltons are here to represent the petition. I also have a letter of opposition.
The Shelton, Mr. Shelton, come forward, please. Ms. Shelton?
Miss.
Ms. Shelton?
How are you?
Good evening and welcome. Do you have anything you'd like to add of what Ms. Hayes has already presented to us?
Yes, we'd like to present two different petitions that we have. One is handwritten and the other is online.
Ms.? Ms. Shelton, come forward, please.
Do you have anything else you want to add?
Do you have anything else you, alright, I have people signed up, so if you'll sit in the front row, you'll get to come back rebuttal after. Ms. Phyllis Harris? Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. My husband and I own property on State Road 662. It's approximately one mile from the proposed ATV park. I am here to express my concerns of the excessive noise that comes with the operation of a park of this magnitude. I have pictures off their webpage of the size of their operation for you. The webpage states ATV recreational park with overnight camping. They state having approximately 500 riders at their night ride in June. 500 riders in a residential area is unthinkable. I also have a recording I can send you of just how loud they are at my home. It's like you were there at the event. With ATVs that can measure 80 to 100 decimals, loud exhaust are universal in the world of ATVs, even in industrial areas, there are decimal restrictions on ATVs. This is not a small operation. The noise does not stop. Once it starts, it is constant for hours on end. People travel from outside the area here. I dare ask, how many of these riders live and/or pay taxes in Pennsylvania County or even live in the state of Virginia? Are they traveling here because events similar have been shut down due to the noise pollution in their area? This is an ongoing problem for ATV routers. The louder, the better is their mindset with purchases of aftermarket exhaust, et cetera. And more and more ATV trails and parks are being shut down because of the noise pollution. Of all the people that have signed the online petition for Red Oak Hollow in favor of a special permit, are these ATV club members from various states that support their own but have nothing at stake here? The signatures they have in favor from this area, how close are they to the proposed site? Are the signatures from all over the county? This needs to be looked at closely. We are discussing the peace that would be taken away from neighboring property owners who do pay taxes here for a recreational park. There are plenty of recreational parks. We all just have one home. The signatures that I have are from property owners only that live near the site and oppose the sound that they are being subjected to, with the exception of one from Double Creek Road in Ringo who asked to sign the petition because of an incident he encountered one weekend of ATVs being on the road down there and almost hitting one. We bought our property 14 years ago, not only for the land but for the peace and quiet of the area. Special permit requests are for landowners to ask for allowing uses that are just outside the intended uses, not for changing the purpose of the zone. There is already a recreational ATV trail and a motocross track. Is this not enough to accommodate? Has the precedent already been set?
Ms. Harris, I'll ask you to go ahead and summarize.
Okay. The main thing here is with the noise, that they would be in conflict with the Pennsylvania County Code, Chapter 41, the noise control ordinance, which is 52 to 57, depending on the time of day and night. It's special, they make exceptions for special events like parades or fireworks. It doesn't state granting exceptions for continuing operation. If this is done, what is the point of the noise ordinance if it can be disregarded continually? Also, in selling your property, who wants to buy property in the country with the area being full of excessive noise? Well, certainly lower than market value. It's not my intention to stop anyone from having fun. It's my intention to protect my rights as a landowner under local and state laws. In this world we live in today?
Ms. Harris, I'm gonna have to cut you off.
Okay.
Because I read the precept, it's three minutes.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where, how close do you live to this property?
One mile.
Approximately one mile.
Approximately one mile. Do y'all have any questions for? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your attention.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Buford Aaron?
Arn. Buford Arn.
Excuse me. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, board. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here in support of J.D. Shelton, Winky Shelton, and Tammy Wilds about this ATV side-by-side recreational park. I went down and looked at it today. I was very pleased with it, the way J.D., anybody that knows J.D., he bought this land 40 years ago and he's lived on it now, 14 years. And this is not something that he lives in Carolina and runs here in this county. It's right around his house. It's 360 degrees around his house. And J.D.'s not a new name to any of us. J.D. is a good steward of the land. He was a logger and he knows washes, he knows land, knows how to take care of it. It's a beautiful place he's got down there. And you think about, some people like to go ride their motorcycles, like to go to the lake, just, you have the same feeling for people that want to ride off-road. Some of these, some of these vehicles that they're using, some of them are $12,000 to $25,000. So, they are nice, they're nice vehicles and these people are serious. And anybody that knows J.D. knows he's not gonna let anything get out of hand. He's gonna keep it under thumb. And I live in Keeland, I've known him, I guess, all my life. But I recommend to this board that they consider J.D. doing this and it being okay. He's gonna have primitive camp in there, which is just tents and maybe an evacuatur, but it won't be any, any big camper's coming in or anything like that. And I think it's a real plus to that area. And this thing, if you check it, it has gone big all over the country. I've been to Utah eight times just on ATV trips riding. So, it is really a lot of fun. So, think about it and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening and welcome. Good evening, sir. My name's Rodney Dalton. I'm the pastor of Cypress Springs Church of God in Halifax, Virginia. And I go by both four-wheeler tracks on the way to church on Sunday. And I've never had anybody pull out in front of me on Red Oak Hollow. They don't have mud in the road, they don't have gravel in the road, they don't have nothing in the road. It's just a clear strip through there. And I think that they should be able to do what they want to do on their land. And that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Dalton.
Thanks, sir.
Good evening and welcome.
Hello. I live about a mile through the woods from the Sheltons. They're good people. I hear a little noise, but that's just like anything in the country. You hear people shooting guns and stuff like that. It's just a little noise. They run a nice place down there. Good place for kids to go somewhere and have a good time and stay out of trouble. And I think that they should be allowed this permit to stay open. They're down off the road, it's about a mile drive down in there to where you get to their place. Not like the other place I have to go by up the road for me. It drags out mud in the road, ATVs are crossing the road. This is way off the road. It's a good place, they're good people, they should be allowed their permit. They also employ my son down there. He works with them sometimes, helping J.D. and just, you know, they're good people. They're not gonna do anything down there that would bother anybody. And like I said, it's a good place for kids or just riders to go socialize and have a good time. I think they should be allowed their permit. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Good evening and welcome. Hi, thank you. My name is Brenda Martin and I've lived in that community for about 20 years and have known J.D. and the whole family. And you couldn't ask for better people. As far as the ATV trails, I've been down there many times myself. It does my heart good to see kids down there with their families, 80-year-olds out there riding. I mean, just everybody gets along and it's a brotherhood or sisterhood or whatever you would say. And I think it's good for the community, it's good for the economy. You know, you got campground down there, they could get business off of people that, you know, come from out of town here. And that's all.
Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Tanner Owen? Mr. Tanner Owen? Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. I could read one letter my neighbor sent because he's in Washington State and he couldn't be here. Just a simple statement from him before I present my issue. But this is from James Hankins, who owns the farm joining the Sheltons. He said, "I own land that joins J.D. Shelton property where they're riding off-road vehicles. Noise from the vehicles, it's so bad that it sounds like they're riding next to my house. Last time I heard them, I walked down through the creek to see if they were on my side of the line. The noise is amazingly loud and hard to listen to. If this continues like this, I would never be able to sell my property and it's hard to live there." I give Tanner Owen permission to speak on my behalf because I'm out of town. So, but yes, for me, I own land that joins a corner that I bought forty-two acres recently, about two years ago or less. And one of my main reasons of buying that piece of property was one of my boys to build a house on it. And these other people, I can't speak for them, of course, but they need to come up to my house. But I would not want to build a house on this property now because of the noise. And if any of y'all don't understand what I'm talking about, I welcome each and every one of you to come out there any weekend and you'll witness it for yourself. It's not from your average four-wheeler. It's these fifteen, twenty thousand dollar ones from what I know and the high-dollar ones that got the high performance. Because a standard low ATV doesn't make that much noise. Can't hear them. But these big ones, when they go through these mud holes and that's part of the fun, when they grab the sucker open, you can hear it inside my house with the window shut. My dogs bark thinking they're on my property. If I would ride my horse like I used to, close to the edges, you know, I don't ride my horse enough, I reckon, to get them used to it. But taking a walk, sitting in a deer stand for peace and quiet, hunting, I mean, it's just, it's out of hand. So the noise is the issue. They've gotta put different exhaust or something on them to get it down to where it's tolerable. But my deal is, I built on this farm fifteen years ago for peace and quiet. If I wanted noise, I would've been in the city somewhere. But I'm not. Like I say, they've already mentioned the other motocrosses we have. It's just ironic to me that this is gonna be a third one in about a two-mile circle. Problem I have as a landowner, every, this is an every-weekend event. Do I really have to listen to this every weekend for the rest of my life? My boys, you know, and their families from then on, this is the problem. I can't move. I built a log house on my own hands with a sawmill. I'm not doing it again. I'm there. So the challenge of just having to listen to this and hearing it in my house...
Ms. Owen, if you will, go ahead and summarize.
Is a, is a real problem. So the devalue of the property, just say something were to happen and I had to sell it, y'all know as well as anybody, you would, I would lose a pile of money trying to sell it. So my wishes for y'all, if this were to pass, no after-dark riding. I got up at two o'clock one morning and could hear it in the house, it was plain as day. Thought somebody was coming down the driveway. They ride them at night. No night riding. When it gets dark, because that's when the sound carries even more, depending on which way the wind's blowing as well, when the leaves off the trees. But no after-dark riding. I would love to see a no Sunday, just on Saturdays, where I could have peace and quiet. Maybe one day of the weekend when I'm home trying to relax. And the main thing, if this passes, do something about the noise on the muffler and exhaust system. Thank you.
Any questions for? Thank you, sir. Pullum?
Yes.
Pullum?
Pullum. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Well, first off, I want to tell you, I'm actually Ms. Harris's neighbor. So we're actually two miles from Red Oak. But I am their neighbor, I live three houses down from them. I don't hear that much when we're out in the pool or whatever, I don't hear the ATVs. But I do ride. But seventy-eight percent of the riders that ride at Red Oak Hollow do not even come from Pennsylvania County. We get them from Henry County, North Carol, all over North Carolina, Campbell County, Halifax, Roanoke, Bedford. They've come from New York, New Jersey. All these riders, when they come here, they purchase products locally. That all helps our county. Paradise Lake Campground, they said their numbers have increased because a lot of people are coming in with their machines. They're staying there over the weekend, riding down there. J.D.'s trail is super nice, it's clean. You see little children running around on their little four-wheelers, they're riding around with their parents. It's a great family atmosphere. We don't have to worry about, I know someone said they almost, somebody almost got hit on the road. The good thing about J.D.'s is, theirs is way off of the main road. I did ride at Pine Lane, the other one. I wanted to see it because I had never been there. I won't ride there anymore because I don't like crossing over three-sixty on that little blind spot. You start crossing that road and boom, a car can get you. I don't like that one. But I do feel that having Red Oak open would be not only an asset to the Keeling community, but it would also be an asset to Pennsylvania County.
Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's all I have signed up. Does anyone here wish to address the commissions on this case that did not have opportunity to sign up?
Gentlemen in the back, raise your hand.
Come forward, please. State your name and address, please.
He's already spoken.
He's already spoken.
He's already spoken.
I've already spoken. I wanted to say something else. Can I say something?
No, Ms., you, you with Ms. Shelton?
I'm with nobody.
He's the pastor that's...
He's already spoken for this case.
You've already spoken, I'm sorry, sir. According to the rules, you had the opportunity when you were here. Am I correct on that, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, sir. Thank you, sir. Ms. Shelton?
Tammy. Come back up.
Come back. You have anything you'd like to present, you've heard falling against your petitions? Do you have any rebuttal or anything you'd like to present to us?
I don't.
What about the hours that we're talking about there? What are your hours now? What do you propose hours?
We normally open at ten in the morning to six at night. Then in the summertime or when the hours, you know, we have more daylight hours, we close at eight.
Question, Ms. Wiles, is this an every-weekend thing? I don't think it is, is it? Is it every weekend?
We're open every weekend.
But, I mean, is there a scheduled event or is it just open to the public or anybody who wants to ride every weekend?
It's just open to the public every weekend.
I, I heard some of them say that, that it was two o'clock in the morning they heard. If, am I missing something?
We had one night ride.
Oh, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
That's just once a year you have one night ride or...
We, we did it just to try to see how it would do because a lot of people had been asking to do a night ride. So we tried it.
Are you gonna do it again?
Well, that was the reason we were shut down, so...
So that should say, no, we're not gonna do another one.
Okay, so you're not gonna have no night rides? Is that correct?
I guess not.
In your best interest.
Any other questions?
I have nothing else.
Thank you. At seven thirty-nine, case S nineteen dash oh-one-oh is closed to public hearing. Mr. Horn?
Mr. Chairman, I've known Mr. Shelton for many years. Our sons were in high school together. Lots been said pro, some con, I understand about the noise level. I myself am in hearing distance from VIR, so you know last weekend and the weekend before that? That's all I heard, all day Saturday and Sunday. One of the things that has not been brought out tonight is that Mr. Shelton doesn't do this just for profit. He maintains with the proceeds from this, but a lot of times he does benefits for people that have cancer or those who are just less fortunate. And he does this out of the goodness of his heart. I'll say that he lost his son, I don't mean to bring up bad memories, but he lost his son, who was a friend of my son, and to a traffic accident. And after that, he, he walked the roads, he walked the highways and picked up drink cans. In two years' time, he had collected enough, he bought four-wheelers for his grandchildren. I mean, that's just the type guy he is. Sometimes I think he's a little nuts because he rides a bicycle ten, twelve, fifteen miles a day. I mean, that's just nuts, especially for a man his age. But I think he's entitled, four-hundred-and-fifty acres. I mean, you're talking about the land half the size of Central Park in New York City. So in this case, S dash nineteen dash oh-one-oh, I recommend that we send to the Board of Zoning Appeals a motion that he be granted this special use permit.
Motion by Mr. Horn?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Dudley? Any discussions?
Mr. Chairman, I think that, that we should have some stipulations on time on this now. I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. But we can do that, can't we?
No. We, I understand that BGA can, we can recommend BGA.
You can make recommendations to the BGA.
Right.
BGA can impose conditions that are not voluntary. They have to agree to it if they...
Ms. Wiles, would you state again the hours of operation?
Ten a.m. to six p.m.
All right, how about during daylight savings times when it don't get dark till nine o'clock? You close at eight?
I'll redo your motion.
I'll re-stipulate or put the stipulation on the motion that you adhere to these hours. Open ten a.m. to six p.m., except during daylight savings times, you are open till eight p.m. Is that, would that be satisfactory?
You recommend that to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Recommend that to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second it again.
Mr. Shelton, is that... Okay.
Any more discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
I'm gonna have to think real fast on this one. Reason being, under normal circumstances, I am a strong proponent believing that people should have the privilege to do what they desire on their property and the property they pay taxes on. But at the same time, in my particular neighborhood, I have one... There is a person who lives actually adjacent to my property who has a relative who comes in occasionally and rides an ATV up and down our street. And it can be most aggravating. And I've actually spoken to that person about it without getting a pleasant result, shall we say. And so I'm, I'm, I'm sort of torn between the things. But at the same time, I have heard it said that this is way off the road. It's in a very large geographic area. I assume there are lots of trees.
Lots of.
And lots of trees in the area. So I'm gonna cast, I'm gonna cast a vote, but that's my thinking. Okay.
Any other discussion? Ms. Hayes, will you call a roll for the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Ms. Meese? Ms. Henderson? Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Case S, we, thank y'all, we understand, appreciate it. Cass, case S nineteen dash oh-one-oh by a vote of six-four, two absent. Recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals with the hour stipulated that they issue a special use permit for recreational use on ATV trails. At seven forty-five, case S nineteen dash oh-one-one is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes?
Okay. First of all, a letter was sent out to Hope Ministries after it was brought to our attention that they were running a residential addiction treatment group home without a special use permit because it falls under special uses. So that letter was sent out July first. You have a copy in front of you. After contacting them, they decided to apply for a special use. So in this case, it's S nineteen oh-eleven. Hope Center Ministries has petition for a special use permit on five-point-nine-six acres located on Mountain Run Road in the Townstall Election District for a residential addiction treatment group home. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Travis Byrd, District Director of Hope Ministries, is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you for having us. So as she mentioned, my name's Travis Byrd. I am the District Director of Hope Center Ministries for the state of Virginia. And I'm also the Campus Director for Hope Center in Axton, Virginia. It's a men's center and what we're proposing is a women's center in Cascade. I don't want to take up too much of your time, I want to just tell you six things. First, if you don't mind, can I address the folks here?
No, you address them.
I'll address you all.
Address her.
Well, I'm addressing the folks behind me. But I, I believe in my conversations with those in the community, specifically there in Cascade, I want to first apologize. I want to offer sincere apology for the way in which we went about getting the home. I think a lot of people feel that, that we snuck in, if you will, that's a term I've used or I've heard. And I want to apologize for that. It was simply ignorance on my part. I was not involved in the purchase of the property, but I do represent the ministry. So therefore, that's all I can do, is offer my apology. And we've learned our lesson, that's something we'll look for as we move into other areas within the Commonwealth. But there's four things I want to tell you about Hope Center, just to explain the ministry and what we do. First of all, and most importantly, if nobody hears anything else we say tonight, we are a Christ-centered ministry. Our whole thing is we specialize, we describe ourselves not as a treatment center, not as a rehab, certainly not a detox, but as a recovery center, a discipleship school for those who are in drug and alcohol addiction. And simply all we do is we walk them through a twelve-step program called Celebrate Recovery. You'll find it at many local churches in the city and the county and in the counties that border us as well, in Pennsylvania County. And so the difference between Celebrate Recovery and Alcoholics Anonymous or Narcotics Anonymous is that we tell you what the higher power is. We believe the higher power is Jesus Christ. And that the only way to free them from addiction or any sin for that matter, I've never been in addiction, but I have manipulated, I have lied, I have sinned. And the only way for me to overcome that sin in my life is through a relationship with Him. So we are Christ-centered. That is our number, that's the only type of treatment we provide, is we're gonna introduce you to the one who died for their sins and took away their shame and their guilt. Second of all, and I'm not a pastor, by the way, but second of all, work therapy program. We are self-sufficient. We fund ourselves, we are not receiving any money from the county, the state, or anything else. We do two fundraisers per year that generate roughly thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And we also do a work therapy program. Our ladies that are here tonight, we have nine in our home right now, they all go to work forty hours a week at KDH Defense Systems. That's in the second phase of the program. And their paycheck comes back into the ministry. Because we believe even if we gave them maybe just fifty or a hundred, if you're coming out of addiction, there's a temptation there to spend money on drugs or alcohol. So what we do is that money comes back into the ministry and that's how it's funded. The third thing I want to let you know is we are a long-term recovery center. There are many rehabs, many treatment centers, none of which we identify as. But many of those are thirty days, sixty days, ninety days. They don't yield much of a result. We believe that a lifelong, a life lived in addiction, I've had men in my center who have been in addiction for forty years. That's not gonna be fixed in thirty days, not in sixty days, not in ninety, really not even in a year. But we believe a year of someone sober, their mind becomes, that dopamine quits dropping in, those endorphins are changed, things are changing within that brain and they're beginning to see more clearly. We're seeing lives restored, families restored, communities restored. We're one of fifteen hope centers worldwide, two are in Virginia. This is the second one in Virginia. And finally, we are a live-in program. Our ladies are there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, other than going to church, going to Bible studies, going to work. Our Campus Director, Tanya Walker, who will speak later tonight, she lives at the Hope Center with the ladies. She is a graduate of the Hope Center. She'll tell you more about that here later. But she lives there in the center with the ladies. We have a very structured environment. We have a long... We have a very structured environment. We have a long forty-five-page paperwork. We go through them upon admission. But that's basically what I want to share with you is who we are. And finally, I just want to let everybody in the room know, this coming Saturday, regardless of how things go tonight, we want to invite anybody and everybody to our home for an open house. That'll be at two PM. If I'm wrong, someone will correct me, but I'm pretty sure it's two to four, and we just like people to meet the ladies, hear their stories, and realize that what we're doing here is changing. I heard one thing as we started tonight, what's best for Pennsylvania County? Well, I can tell you what God's done in Henry County and the city of Martinsville. I've never been in addiction, but I know people that have been, and I've spent, I spend seventy hours a week with twenty-three men. I'm seeing their lives changed through the power of the gospel of Jesus Christ. And I'm not ashamed of that, not gonna apologize for that, but I will apologize for the way that it was perceived that we went about that house. And we've certainly learned our lesson. We'll make sure we do community meetings moving forward, but that's all I've got for you.
Any questions, Mr. Byrd? If you'll sit at the front, we have people signed up, and you'll get a chance to come back to rebuttal. Mr. Monty Cates?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, welcome, Mr. Chairman, members, elders. My name's Monty Cates. I live on Mountain Run Road, about a mile from where this center is located. My family first moved on Mountain Run Road in nineteen sixty-eight. My parents, my five younger brothers grew up there. Four of the family members, who are not here tonight, own property there. My first point, traffic. Who's coming in and out our community in Cascade? Who's going up and down our roads, especially Mountain Run Road, and why? One of Hope Center Ministries' webpages states that family visitation is important in their ministry. They also state that they want to have twenty women in this center. That's twenty more cars up and down our road. Who are the families? Are they recovering addicts? Each resident also has a counselor. That's more traffic. Who are all these people that are coming into our community? I heard, and I'm sure Travis will tell me if I'm wrong, that recently, two of the ladies left their center. And it was said, they made a phone call, they left. Somebody picked them up. Was it a friend? Was it their family? Or was it their dealer? What's the character of the people that this center brings in? Travis Byrd, I'm sure is a good, upstanding Christian man, but who's he bringing on my road? I still have two teenage daughters at home. There's a little bit of fear in my community now, and I have some petitions here, but I'm not ready to present them tonight. I'll do that next week.
Ms. Cates, if you will, go ahead and summarize, please.
People are locking up what they have in my community. I'd like to quote one thing here. A research study from Longwood University. The title of it is, "Not in My Backyard: The Effects of Substance Abuse Treatment Centers on Property Values." I'm gonna read from it. "We find that neighborhood treatment centers are associated with an eight percent reduction in nearby home prices, and this discount is magnified for treatment centers that treat opiate addictions." Hope Center doesn't discriminate in what addictions they treat. They treat them all. In conclusion.
I'm gonna have to cut you off, sir. We announced three minutes at the start.
Yep, and some people spoke more, but I'll give you that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Mr. Angela Fitzgerald, Ms. Angela Fitzgerald. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. Yes, I sat at this or stood at this podium several months ago lobbying for a Hope Center for our community. And it is my honor and my pleasure, I usually have plans on Tuesday night, and I'm a Celebrate Recovery Minister. These are my sisters and my friends. Every Tuesday, I drive from the Bannister District, I drive from East Gretna Road all the way down to Cascade to work the twelve steps with these women. They're incredible women. I will fight for them. They're so special to me. They're not drug addicts to me. I have drug addicts who live in my community. There was a drug bust down the road from me just Friday night. Police presence was huge, huge. That scares me. These women don't scare me at all. They are special to me. They're the ones who, they teach me wisdom. I don't have a history of drug use, but my husband is in recovery from drug abuse. He met Jesus in rehab. It was a thirty-day program, and praise the Lord, he met Jesus there and followed through with staying sober. So I will fight for women who are fighting for their lives to stay sober. I wish this house was in my neighborhood instead of the drug bust that happened down the road from me.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. David Craddock? Good evening, welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, everyone. My name is David Craddock. I'm a law-abiding, tax-paying citizen of Pennsylvania County. Lived here my entire life. I raise a family here. I love this county, I love this area, and I love God and I love people, and I don't discriminate against anyone. And I am here on behalf of Hope Center Ministries because I believe in these ladies who have had some unfortunate events in their lives that have changed them in the wrong way, and we are trying to change them in the right way. The gentleman asked about the people that are coming in and out of the road, and I certainly understand, I'm a family man. I have three children myself, and I understand not knowing who comes and goes, but I'm one of those that comes and goes. My wife is one of those that comes and goes. Ms. Fitzgerald, our pastor, his wife. Many people within our church go and visit and see these ladies, and they're fine young women, and I certainly have grown close to them. My wife has grown close to them, and even my children who are here, and I know it's odd to see children in a courtroom, but my children, as we got word that there was a hearing tonight and an opportunity to speak, my nine-year-old daughter, when my wife asked the question, "Are we coming, are we coming to speak on behalf of the Hope Center?", my daughter said, "Yes, we are, because we're family, and family sticks up for family." That's a nine-year-old that said that. A nine-year-old that sees these ladies on a weekly basis because they come to church and they worship with us. And again, they've had some unfortunate things that have happened to them, and they're trying to change their lives. And I'm thankful that we have a ministry, that we have an opportunity to reach people like that. I think too many times in our society, we support the ones that don't want the help versus the ones that do want the help. So tonight, I ask you, and I ask our community, and I understand, again, I understand the gentleman, I really do. And I don't know anything about zoning, I don't know anything about permits, but I know a lot about people. And I've had a family member that's been in drug addiction himself and has gone through recovery as well. And so I do understand how people are, and I just ask that you give them an opportunity to do what they're doing, to continue to do what they're doing, to continue to change lives and to help people and to raise good people in our community that will contribute and help other people down the road that may come into unfortunate circumstances and have problems as well. Thank you so much for your time. I really do appreciate it.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Craddock.
Ms. Emily Bradley? Welcome, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Emily Bradley, and I've been a resident at Hope Center Ministries for nine months. My, I grew up, my stepdad is a commissioner of state parks in Tennessee. My mom was a schoolteacher, so addiction does not discriminate. I'm from a small town in Tennessee, and before we knew it, heroin had moved into our town and overtaken our community there. I found myself in a situation where I needed help. I had, I went to East Tennessee State University for Parks and Recreation Management, and I was a seasonal interpreter ranger for Tennessee State Parks when my addiction to opiates got out of control. And there is a nationwide epidemic of opiate addiction, whether we want to admit it or not. And just at work today, there in the community, we work with everyone from the community, we had a newcomer come in, and she stood next to me in her vest that they give to the people that are there for the first thirty days, and she said to me, she broke down when she realized where we were from and what we were doing, and she was a heroin addict herself, and she asked me, she said, "Why would they send people from Tennessee to come into this community that's overrun with heroin?" And back in December, my director and I decided that we were gonna go somewhere and try to come into some communities and share with them what God has done in our lives and how you can turn your life around and how there is hope. And we thought we were going to Montana at first, and we ended up here in Virginia. I think God has sent us here. But just so you know, this, the community that we live in has a huge heroin problem, huge. Your teenage daughters, your grandsons, great-grandkids, what's gonna happen down the road whenever more and more issues are addressed and there's no place for them to receive help, just in and out, in and out? The recidivism rate is outrageous because no one's shown any, any type of rehabilitation or a better way of living your life. And I, for one, know that if it were my child, my grandkids, I would want them to be in a place that's Christian-based, where I could go and visit them, and for them to be able to have a chance at a new life.
Any questions? And you live at Mountain Run Road in Cascade, is that right?
Yes, sir.
How long have you been there?
I have been in, at the address there, or in the facility altogether.
No, at this address?
Since the end of May.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Bradley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patty Johnson? Good evening, welcome.
Members of the board, some of you remember me from the last hearing as well. I spoke on behalf of Hope Center Ministries. I'm not employed by them, but I am a member of Compassion Church, which is the church these ladies attend. I've taken some notes as I've heard people speak, so I can try to help out with some answers to questions. One of the gentlemen brought up about several of the ladies leaving from the Hope Center, and how did they leave? They did not leave from the house. They were not at the house. They were out at an outing in town, and they did not leave from that house. Their access to telephones is very, very limited, depending on what stage of the program they're in. So they could not have called a ride from the house to come get them. These ladies are in active addiction, and I've spoken to several of these community members. I've spoken to a couple of you guys on the board. And what I'm getting from the people I'm talking to is what they describe and what their concerns are, you know, like, well, whether they're gonna break in our house, or they're gonna do this, or they're gonna do that. What they described to me are people who are in active addiction, and these ladies are not in active addiction. And one of the questions I've gotten is, well, why are they here from other states? Why is it, you know, why are they not in our community? Well, this is a, the model that we run is, is a, it's held, and it's accountability model. So you can't take twenty women straight out of our community in the first stage and run the center that way. There have to be people here to start it because each one of these women are held accountable, and someone is with them all the time that's either at a certain phase or completed the program. In talking with the neighbors in this, in this community over the last couple of days and the last week or more, in talking to them, several of them pointed out, I understand there's a need for this house. The man that lives in that house right there is an addict, or the woman that lives down the street is an addict, and that's, that's, as some people spoke before, those are the ones you have to worry about. These ladies are no threat to the community. They're very active in our church. They're there every Sunday. They work our parking lot. They welcome people in every Sunday. They're active in our women's group on Wednesday nights. He asked about the traffic coming in and out. Well, I've been there every day since Thursday, all day. I've passed two cars coming in and out of there, and I'm the only car, other than the director or the van, coming to and from work that have been there, other than two visitors who came to visit the girls on Sunday. They have family visitation on the weekends, and that's the majority, other than the mentors that come from our church meeting with the women. I was a magistrate here for seven years. I saw both sides of this. I saw people from this community who asked for help, and we'd never had this in this community before.
Let me ask you to summarize.
Yes, sir. I'd like to say this, as, as the last lady from the Hope Center spoke and said, there is a huge heroin problem here in Danville. As a magistrate for seven years, I never saw heroin but one time. We didn't have that problem here. Heroin and meth are our biggest problems now. It was more cocaine. Drugs have evolved in this area, and there's a huge need for it. And these people are going about it the right way, and these ladies are no danger to this community.
Ms. Johnson? Go ahead, Dr. Miller.
Dr. Miller?
Question. I could reserve this for Reverend, but I'll ask you. Has there been in the last year, two years, whatever, have there been any negative events in the neighborhood involving the ladies or people there?
This home, the home at this address, has only been in existence a few months, and no, sir, there have not been any negative.
Zero?
Zero.
How about the one in Henry County?
I can let Travis answer that.
As far as negative events in the, in the county or in the neighborhood, no, there have not been. I will tell you all, as I told Mr. Kate and Mr. Griffin today as I visited their homes, I said, "I gotta be as transparent as possible." We're dealing with folks who are coming out of addiction. It can be a very messy ministry. But I will tell you, the most negative event I've ever had is someone used drugs or they used alcohol. And our policy is immediately upon that happening, if they're in any type of legal trouble, then we will contact that probation officer. They will immediately issue a warrant for their arrest, and then they'll be picked up at the Hope Center and taken away. But I had asked Sheriff Perry to come tonight. I have a close friend of mine, Sheriff of Henry County, and that was one thing. He said, "You need to point out, Travis," he said, "we've never had a call from the police for any type of dispute or anything like that." So we, to answer your question, probably give them more information than I need to, but I want to be transparent. We have not had any negative issues in the community there in Henry County.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Johnson? On weekends, and I'm trying to help Mr. Cates on one of the questions he brought up, and you addressed it in your presentation. On weekends, what's the traffic? Can you explain the traffic, not during the week, but on weekends when families is off work and can come and visit there?
The ladies have family visitation on Friday evenings, and I believe it is from? And as we, as I stated, the majority of these women are not from this area, so there are very few that have any visitation at all right now because their families are traveling eight hours one way to see them. I think, you know, we have one or two on Friday night that come down and visit. Then on Saturdays, I mean, on Sundays, I'm sorry, after church, their families can come back and visit with them. But at this time, the only vehicles that are even at that Hope Center are the director's car and the van that transport the ladies to and from work. Everywhere they go is in that van.
The visitation, is it limited to their immediate family? Or can their first cousins, ninth cousins come in from out of state? I think I'm getting to where Mr. Cates was concerned. What type of quality people are you opening up for the people to come in?
I understand what you're saying, Chairman. Unfortunately, as Emily said. Unfortunately, as, as Emily said, addiction doesn't discriminate. And, um, I actually had one of the mothers stay at my house personally this weekend because, uh, as somebody brought up today, there was a huge race at V R last weekend and it took every room in this town. So when one of the mothers wanted to come and visit, I didn't know her, I'd never met her before in my life, I said, "I know you don't know me, but you're welcome to come stay with me." And I went out with her to pick her daughter up, because it is a long ways out and off the road and, uh, it's hard to find. Um, our Hope Center itself is actually almost a mile off the road. Uh, if you didn't know what was there, you wouldn't, if somebody hadn't taken you there, you wouldn't know, but, um, there's very, very few.
But basically, is it the immediate family or...
It just depends, I mean...
I can answer a question specifically.
Okay.
So to answer your question, um, each resident has five approved visitors that they can put on their approved visitor list for Sundays and Fridays, um, and not everybody has five people that will qualify. Um, for example, in my men's center, I have a man, I know his fiance is in active addiction, I know his father is in active addiction, and I tell him, "Your father and your fiance are not allowed to visit the center." So the only people that are visiting our residents are immediate family, we're talking about grandparents, parents, siblings, children, but those siblings and children cannot be in active addiction. Does that make, so that makes it, so I, even with this gentleman, because I knew the situation, his father has to pass an interview with me before I allow, "This gentleman's been here ninety days, I'm still not allowing his father to visit." So that's to answer the question specifically.
And, and, and their families themselves, you know, like, they come from all types of backgrounds.
Any other questions? Thank, excuse me, Mr. Stone, I'm sorry.
You saying that, uh, all of these people are from out of town? That you got it to Son of Man?
We have nine ladies, one is from Henry County, um, one is from Roanoke and the remainder are from Tennessee. They're all in the second stage of, the second phase of the program. There's, like Travis had said before, there are three stages and right now all these ladies are in the second stage, they all work. We have one cook who stays there during the day and, and she cooks all the meals for the ladies.
I'm having, of course, I'm understanding from, what I am told is that there's, there's no way of getting off this.
What do you mean?
There's no way, no way, you may quit taking it for ten years, but you come back to it, this is gonna kill you.
There are people, that's, that's completely inaccurate, there are people who, who complete program, these programs of this type and, and, in my experience and the, and the, uh, backgrounds that I've read about, this type of long-term facility has more success rate than any that's offered.
I, I have a follow-up. My part-time line of work, okay?
Yes, sir.
If you've been to a church and picked up six on Sunday night at church, they were eating.
And that's why we're here, sir, to stop that.
You're not stopping it, that's what I'm getting at.
We're working on it, well, that's what we're doing there, we're working on that.
And what the, well, I've been on the school board, I've done, I've done a lot of stuff with the program. What they're telling us, there's no way.
Well, that's not the truth.
It's coming back to, I mean, these are highly educated doctors, lawyers, all these people, and I know we have a big problem in Danville.
We do.
We bring them, they got, I understand, they got Martin Luther, they've got more than Danville does. Halfway between these two cities.
And that's why there's such a great need here, yes, sir. That's why there's such a great need here and that's what we're doing, we're trying to do something about that.
But you're missing my point. I'm not seeing anything that is doing any good, eventually they're coming back to them.
And, and I'm telling you, sir, that's, that's inaccurate information, there, these, there are people who can beat their addiction.
Because we, we picked them up that couldn't be touched.
Ms. Tanya, the center director, I believe, has been clean three years now, is that correct?
I mean, you know, we've been out, that we had a bag, I mean cremated them.
I understand.
Could not be touched. Coming out through their pores and they could off the drugs for a long time, yeah, up in their mid-forties.
They just had a huge drug bust, it was on the front page of the paper, that came out of Norfolk, Virginia, fourteen million, enough fentanyl to kill fourteen million people, those are the people you can't touch. We're aware of that and, and we are doing everything in our power to, to get these people as clean as possible and, and, and make them functioning members of society.
Any other question, Dr. Miller?
I have one more question, please.
Yes, sir.
Again, how many ladies are being served at this time?
At this time, we have nine ladies, but the capacity of the house is between sixteen and twenty.
Okay. What is the, um, just from my own information, what is the ethnic breakdown?
At this time, we have one African-American and eight Caucasian females.
Any others? Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Is, is that...
Excuse me, Dr. Miller.
I'm sorry, it's, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Is that usually the, the general breakdown?
It changes, we may have all African, African-American and no Caucasians, we may have all that, uh, all Caucasians and no African-Americans, we may have them equally split, it's at the time of the need of the, of the individual, we don't, we don't discriminate.
Any others? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Tanya Walker. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, thank you, my name is Tanya Walker, I am the director of the Ladies' Center at Hope Center Ministries. I have been three years clean and sober, I was in addiction, I was a resident of Hope Center Ministries, I was made a community leader, I graduated the program, I interned the program, I was recovery coordinator and now I get the privilege and honor of being director. It can be done, Hope Center Ministries, I can attest that they give you all the tools you need to be able to stay sober. We are a Christ-centered and I can tell you right now that if it was not for God, I would not be sober. Started my addiction when I was in twenty years old, um, off and on until I was fifty-one years old and I come in the Hope Center Ministries. They give you everything you need to be able to stay sober if you wanna fight, you know, for your recovery.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all that signed up, does anyone come in late that wish to address the, okay, I will start you up first, come forward, please state your name and address.
She's gonna come first.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak, my name is Sue Fowler, I live at eighteen thirty Mountain Run Road. As a matter of fact, these people at this house is right next door to my property. My husband and I, we own five acres, um, out in the country and we spent, we've lived there now twenty years, we used to live in Danville on West Overdrive in a drug-infested area of sandy shores. It took us quite a long time to search out and find the acreage that we wanted to buy that was out in the country, in Cascade, Virginia, not too far from where we were raised, quick enough to get into Danville, quick enough to get home. We love it out there, it's quiet, it's peaceful, we don't have a traffic problem per se. I can't tell you how mortified I am to have learned just a few days ago that these people had already moved in next door to me. I find it fascinating that these people talk about addiction and how they're not in active condi, uh, addiction now, but if you know about this problem, once an addict, you are always an addict, that never leaves you. If you don't believe it, Google it, do some research. I, I, I don't know how to tell you how devastated that I have become in the last week since learning about these people have already moved in. Now, the pastor here, he can apologize all he wants to about how it kinda slipped by, that he didn't mean or intend for it to be this way. It's my understanding through a lot of research that they have already done this on another area of Pennsylvania County, before they got the zoning permits done the proper way. They kinda went under the fence and they moved these ladies in, thinking that, well, once we get them here, it'll be too late for anybody to throw us out. But for myself, I am just devastated, I feel, for the past week, I do not feel safe in my house, I don't feel safe out on my deck, in my backyard overlooking what I thought was a nice peaceful private property that we've lived there now for twenty years. You know, I can just, I worry about people like this in my backyard, 'cause they're basically in my backyard. I worry about, well, once an addict, always an addict, what's to keep these ladies from walking out?
Ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to summarize if you will.
Anything, keep them from stealing anything that we have, breaking in my house, cutting my throat so they can get money for their next fix, I know it happens. Maybe this young lady that spoke, it hadn't happened to them, but all it takes is one time and I don't wanna be that person. And the other thing that they haven't bothered to tell anybody is that it's our understanding that a lot of these women are coming here that would have otherwise been serving a jail sentence. They have no security, they have no ankle bracelets.
Ma'am, I'm gonna have...
They can leave at their discretion, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Sir, you wanna speak? Thank you, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
My name is Donald Fowler, I'm eighteen thirty Mountain Run Road with a house the very closest to this facility. My concern is for security. We, my wife and I went up and we actually talked to Tanya, I think last Saturday, and she told us they've got no way of keeping up with these ladies, they don't wear ankle bracelets, they don't have any security, no gates, no, no bars on the windows, they can come and go as they want if they wish. The idea is that they stay on the property. However, my question to her was, if they choose at two o'clock in the morning, that they decide they wanna sneak out a, a bedroom window or even walk out the front door, can they do it? The answer was yes. And my question to Tanya, who I think is a very nice lady, my question to her was, "What's to keep them in the property?" And she said, "Well, faith-based." I've got a lot of faith, too, I go to church, but one thing I, I don't wanna do is have somebody beside me that's drug addicts and regardless of what these people say, if you've been, if you're an alcoholic, you're always an alcoholic, if you're a drug addict, you're always a drug addict. My, I'm a salesman on an advertising company, I stay gone quite a bit, my wife is by herself. The lady that lives directly across the street from me, her husband's a long-distance truck driver, she's by herself. We don't want people in our neighborhood that's got the potential, it's always potential, but we don't want anybody in our neighborhood that's got the potential to come and go anytime they please, they can come in, in my, come down my yard, they can break into my house, they can do whatever. All these people from the religious organization, I think they're great people, if they're, if these people and they're so concerned with these people, I know that Hope Ministries is a large organization, why don't y'all let them live, live with you? I don't think anybody on this board wants to have this facility beside them, if you do, you gotta be out of your mind. I'm worried about my property value and I'm worried about the safety of my wife. I guess that's about all I got to say, but I think every one of you, if you put yourself in my situation and everybody else's situation on Mountain Run Road, you would not wanna have these people beside you. I think these people deserve a second chance, but they need to go, go somewhere else, not in my neighborhood.
Any questions? Thank you. There was a gentleman back here, a lady, come forward, please. And I'm gonna get to you over there when, I was going as the sign came up. Thank you, well, give me your name and address, please.
My name is Julie King and I live on Cascade Road, which is not very far from the proposed center. I've been sitting here listening and I had made some notes before getting here this evening. The one that just stood out and hit me mostly is the last few comments referring to these ladies as "these people." They're human beings.
Ma'am, dress, dress up.
They're human beings. This is a faith-based organization, they deserve just as many rights as anyone else and I think it's a privilege and I think also that it's, it's kind of, um, it's a good thing that they chose Cascade, it's a good thing. Anytime you can bring the Lord closer to anyone's life, how can it be wrong? That's my opinion. I have a whole list of names here that I know personally that does not, no longer have a voice. They died due to addictions, due to the perils of the evilness of, you spoke of it earlier, you've, you've seen this, all of us see this, some it just hits closer to home than others. Now, I want to address the person that says, "What type of people will be coming down this road?" My deceased husband is a Grammy winner, I am a Grammy nominee, he's dead due to addiction, that's the type of people that are in and out of these houses. If he'd a had a chance, he may have been alive today. I've got a list of names that don't have another chance at all, they don't have a voice. The, the people here that's asking for this are asking for a chance. And it, it, it really lessens my heart to think otherwise. The faith-based community that we are known and we love, I'm a member of Cascade Baptist Church, I'm not a member of Compassion, however, I feel strongly for the Lord and the works of, and I do believe, yes, a person that is addicted is always an addiction, i- it's always there, it doesn't mean they have to act upon it. Because my Grammy nominee husband was clean for seven years.
Ask you to summarize if you will, ma'am.
So, yeah, it, it comes around full circle, but if you never give these people an opportunity, and I say "these people" as they were referred to earlier, then you'll never see a difference, it'll never be a change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Sir? Good evening and welcome, state your name and address, please.
Dwayne Adams, eighteen sixty Mountain Run Road, and so, first I wasn't gonna speak, but after hearing everything, I, you know, the passion build up, you know, when you hear of a special use permit for a residential addiction treatment group home on a ru, on a road that I've lived on for seventeen years, that was a house designed for residential purposes, we don't even have a business on our road. I mean, it's a quiet, quaint place that, yes, and, and I would say the traffic has increased, if it's due to that, I don't know, it has increased, and to take the chance of a property value going down as well, too, I just wanted to reiterate what the others have said, I mean, I think, I agree that it's a great thing that they're trying to do, it just should not be in a very rural area and that a house that was designed for residential purposes. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Come forward, sir, please. Good evening and welcome, state your name and address.
John Hornick, three seven seven two Whitmore School Road, and, uh, speaking completely off the cuff, I wasn't even sure what I was coming to tonight, but I know these ladies from the Compassion Church, uh, and I have a two-year-old son, I would trust my little boy in their house all day long. When you see them, th, these women wanna be here, they're not forced here, uh, it's not something that, you know, a judge demanded they do, they wanna be here, uh, they wanna be closer to Jesus, they wanna be, you know, normal people, functioning people, and they are, when you see them, you know, Greek people, when you see them worshiping and hugging and crying, they're here because they wanna be and it's, it's a beautiful sight. To go further, we're not in the same department, but I work with them, I, uh, manage a warehouse and do purchasing, K D H Defense, they, they go to and from work, to and from church, in a passenger van, so they're not driving, they're not free to do whatever they want, they're not running around town, they show up to work, they work hard, you know, no issues, they're not, you know, there's nothing shady going on, they are great employees, so, you know, they're great members of the church, great members of the community. If people, everyone's afraid of ten to twenty girls, ladies, that are here for the right reason, they wanna be here, and, you know, it's clear that there's drug issues all throughout this county, all throughout Henry, Henry County, you don't know who your neighbors are, you don't know where the drugs are, that, believe it or not, drugs are in rural areas, but for these ladies to wanna be here, they made that choice and they're living it, why would you stop that, why'd you pull out, pull the, uh, rug out from underneath them, it's beyond me, I, I don't know if you, you know, ship them to a desert, you know, lock them up, everyone wants, you know, to fix the epidemic, except when it's, you know, in your neck of the woods, we should be helping these ladies, supporting them, they wanna be here and like I said, it's a beautiful thing to see, when you see them at church, when you see them, you know, they said just embracing, hugging, crying, they made a commitment and they made a choice and we should support that.
Any questions? If I understand, you work where these ladies are employed, is that correct?
I do, yes, K D H Defense in Eden... KDH Defense in Eden, North Carolina.
In Eden, North Carolina. Okay. I have. Any other people? Any other? Okay, Mr. Bird? You have anything you'd like? Uh, I'm sure of some of the questions come, you have, that you'd like to present to us.
Yeah, I was able to address a few things there. So, I'm glad this was mentioned. Well, one of the things that I think it was Mr. Stowe that brought up was, we have ladies coming in from Tennessee. Let me explain just our model real quick. As I mentioned to you all before, our primary source of income are these ladies going to work and us getting that money. So, when we opened a Hope Center in Axton, the first one in Virginia, we went fifty thousand dollars in the hole. We almost had to close the doors. We had about thirteen men in there. So, what we decided is we're gonna, anytime we open a center, whether that be in Danville, whether that be, we have one opening in Montana that's already been mentioned, North Carolina, so on and so forth, the list goes on. Um, that we would send residents, leaders from other centers that are in the second phase of the program. Second phase is where you begin working, and that paycheck's gonna come into Hope Center to help pay the mortgage, help pay the electric bills, so on and so forth. So, that's why we have so many ladies from Tennessee that are in our program. And, um, so they're from Tennessee, they're our leaders, and then we will begin to bring in more women from the Pennsylvania County, Danville City, Martinsville, you know, so on and so forth, surrounding counties. So, I did want to address that. Um, and, you know, the argument that an addict isn't always an addict is I think if we all were honest with each other in this room, we've all fallen short of the glory of God, we're all sinners. And I'm, and, and I've been referred to tonight as pastor and reverend, I am not, I'm not ordained in any way. I'm an insurance salesman that was called upon the Lord to lead a ministry about something I don't really know very little about. But I was called here because I said, God, God told me, he said, Travis, if you're not gonna do this, if you're not gonna stand up for these men, that their parents have left them, they've beat them, they've died, who's gonna do it? If you don't do it, who is gonna do it? And so, that's why I'm here, I don't have an answer. If I don't do it, who in the world's gonna do it? And so, that's why I'm here. And so, I don't believe that an addict is always an addict. Because you know what? Ten years ago, I was suicidal. But I'm standing here now knowing that God has freed me from that, so I had not had a suicidal thought in ten years. Sin is sin. It's just these ladies, these precious ladies, theirs just happen to be more public. But we all got the same eternal consequence for our sin, no matter how big or how small it is. And, and I just want to say in closing that, that, um, I hope you all will consider passing this because we have been there since late May. I, I, once again, I'm sincere in my apology on the way we went about that, we've been here since late May. And, uh, I would imagine there are no noise complaints, there have been no sightings. We are out of sight, out of mind, which makes a good neighbor.
Mr. Bird?
Yes, sir.
When did y'all purchase this property?
I'm not a hundred percent sure of the purchase date, I know they did, I was not involved in the purchase of this property. Um, however, I know we probably closed on it in mid-May because shortly after we closed on the property, we were moving in.
Mr. Chairman, it shows it was recorded May the ninth.
May the ninth, okay.
Um, you just touched, when did y'all first bring the first ladies in?
These, these, uh, same ladies that are here with us came in, um, in, in late May. I don't have a specific date for you unfortunately, I know it was prior to June because I got married June first. So, it was prior to May, or prior to June first, it was late in the month.
All the commissioners have in front of them a letter.
Yes, sir.
That is July the first, two thousand nineteen.
Yes, sir.
And it was sent to Hope Sonum Ministries.
Yep.
Um, fifteen ten Clayton Road, Waverly, Tennessee. And it was sent by certified mail with the receipt and the property number. And it was tell, it was stated that y'all was in violation with the zoning ordinance.
Yes, sir.
Of Pennsylvania County.
Yes, sir.
Uh, why did you continue to operate after you got this notice from Pennsylvania County? It wasn't from us, it was from Pennsylvania County, and it gave you the opportunity of dates to respond and reply?
Yep, um, so I actually received notification of the letter from my boss in Tennessee. Um, and he, uh, notified me on July the fifth. So, I immediately drove from Axton to Chatham, the office was closed because it was the day after the fourth. And I spoke to Ms. Hayes on Monday, uh, that would have been the eighth. And she said we could continue to operate as we were, um, but that we needed to apply for the special use permit. And she told me to give her two weeks, two or three weeks, I can't remember how many weeks, and to call her. I called her, and then we talked about the steps that would be taken. But I was instructed, um, by Community Development to continue operating as we have been. And so, we've done that.
You was instructed by your company, Community Development?
No, by Community Development in Pennsylvania County.
No, we did, we did discuss it, Greg and I, and Vaden, and allowed it, we was bringing them into compliance. So, yes, he is correct on that.
So, therefore, they were not in violation then?
They were in violation, they were bringing it into compliance.
With Pennsylvania County? Is that correct?
The letter was sent out that it was a violation, and he came in, he contacted me, and yes, applied for the special use. So, we allowed it to continue as long as he applied for the special use to bring it into compliance.
Technically, he's not in violation right now because he's applying for the special use permit. Am I correct on that?
Is that right, Greg?
That, that is correct in the sense that the, the option that he was given to fix the problem is to get the permit as soon as possible.
Right.
And he has applied as soon as possible.
Right, so therefore, we can, technically, right now, he's not in violation.
That is... Legally, I hesitate to say that, but he has taken the alternative approach that's been given by the Community Development.
Right, he's doing, he's doing what was instructed by the officials of Pennsylvania County.
Right, with the intention of addressing the problem as soon as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Let me ask you this.
Sir?
I don't understand why we're bringing people in from outer state. When I drove by a place yesterday morning, this morning, fifty to a hundred cars, they were there that morning to be treated for drugs, over, for the problems they've got. And we having to bring people from outer state?
And as I mentioned, let me explain real, just real quick, real briefly. Phase one of the program, forty-five days, no one woke up one day and said, hey, I'm gonna become addicted to heroin, or meth, or cocaine, or whatever their drug of choice is. Something has happened in their life, and we call that the root issue. So, the first forty-five days of the program, they're not going to work. They're in the house, they're getting counseling, they're going through a bookwork curriculum, uh, and, and they're focusing on what is the root issue of my addiction and digging that up. So, those people do not, unfor, I hate to talk about it as a business, but, you know, we do have to make money, we have to break even to keep the doors open. So, they're not generating any income for the ministry. We only charge seven hundred dollars. This is the most affordable program in the country, is all someone pays out of pocket. Then the next thirty-eight weeks, the second phase, they go to work for forty hours a week, and their full paycheck then comes back into Hope Center Ministries, and that's how we pay our bills and we provide recovery for our residents. So, the reason we started the center with eight women from Tennessee, first of all, there were eight women who were willing to transfer to begin, to begin a, a program here in Virginia. But the reason we started with them is because they could immediately start going to work and generating income for the center. So, we didn't end up like Axton did, fifty thousand dollars in the hole. We could break even. And the reason we haven't had anybody in this area come into our program yet, my admissions coordinator, um, he actually retired this morning. That's something he's been battling for a couple of months, but, uh, he, he's retired this morning, and I'm gonna be looking for an admissions coordinator to develop relationships in Pennsylvania County, city of Danville, so we can begin to bring residents. Every resident we have moving forward, um, will be from this area. And as these women graduate and become productive citizens of either this community, or they go back to Tennessee where their families are, whatever they decide to do, the, the house, a year, eighteen months from now, the house will be filled with people from Pennsylvania County and city of Danville, or Henry County, Martinsville, you know, surrounding areas. But Tennessee was simply just a financial decision so that we didn't go in the hole. And we wanted to be a good steward of the, uh, of the assets that God had given us.
Too many of them. I guess I might would tell you, there's one in my family.
Right.
Who wait for her to die.
Yep.
Also, English teacher. Did this teenager. Took, came out, went to college, got an education, teaching English, one of, one of we came, I said, student, Dr. Miller, I said, no school, we came, you know, find an English teacher. We not expecting her to live this year. I was gonna go back to it. We picked up a bunch of them, then all for the ten years, went back to it and did it. They can't give it up.
Right.
For some reason or another, I don't know, uh, I remember the years when I was in school, liquor was a problem with all the kids and stuff like this.
Yep.
I didn't want to take anything, maybe for sick.
Right.
I'm gonna eat.
I'm with you.
Food was more important to me.
Amen.
So, that was my drug. I've really got a problem with this, 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 this program, and I understand what the citizens are talking about. You're bringing them in that many. That's the whole load that I have. It's just, I, I mean, I, I pray for you, good word, and I have no faith.
And I, I don't have to have, I, I mean, with the utmost, utmost respect, I don't have to have faith, I see it every day. I have twenty-three men in Hope Center. I have two, the two men that work for me graduated from my program. One was a clinical nurse specialist, heroin addict. He's now clean. He's working in my center. He's a fantastic asset to the ministry. I, the reason I can be here tonight is because he's providing twenty-four-seven coverage for my center. But he's twenty, almost thirty year, thirty months sober at this point. I trust him, I can, I've seen, I've seen what God can do, and what I would offer for your loved one, I will pay the seven hundred dollars myself to just for them to see what Hope Center is about and see if it doesn't change their life. Now, I will say this about Hope Center, is we are not a place for people who need recovery. Okay? I want to make it very clear, we are a place for people who want recovery. Everyone that comes into our Hope Center comes, goes through a vetting process. We do not take anyone with a mental health disorder. You could argue that addiction is a mental health disorder, but no schizophrenia, no bipolar, no violent crimes, no sexual offenders. We're talking about, we're talking about people who have said, I am sick and tired, if I don't change something, I will die. And they say, I want to make a change, and I want, I want to try something different. Emily didn't mention it, but Emily has, has been through every type of treatment or rehab you can think of. But one thing has sustained, it's not Hope Center, it's not church, it's not religion, it is a relationship with Jesus Christ. And that is the only thing that has been able to sustain her. And I've got, I've got dozens of men that I call my friends that I let in my home. I let, I have them, at last night, I had three of my leaders come to my house and watch a football game with me, and they know where I live. And I'm the one who has to dismiss somebody. If somebody has a behavioral issue, I'm the one that says, you're no longer allowed to stay here. But I still allow them to come into my home, and I love my wife more than I love these men. And I love my wife dearly, but my wife loves them too. And they know where I live, but I have no fear whatsoever because perfect love casts out fear. I'm, I just, I, I just, I... The, the question to me is, what are we, what are we doing? We have a program that is tried and true, we have been in existence for twelve years, and we talk about an addict. The founder of Hope Center, fifteen Hope Centers, twenty-seven Compassion Churches, an orphanage called Jacob's House, a homeless shelter called Mission Six One Five, and it's going all over the country, was founded by one of those people. Josh Hannah is a recovered addict, and he said, one day, he heard the gospel of Jesus Christ, and he ran to the altar. He said, this is what I've been waiting on my entire life, and he never used again. I don't know how long Josh has been sober, I want to say fifteen years. But you know who runs the ministry alongside him? The guys he used to run with, because he introduced them to a one who could change it, to the one who could change it. And they're clean. I work for them. There, there's, I don't have to, like I say, I don't have to have faith, I see it. I don't have faith in what I can't see, I have faith in what I cannot see.
Any other questions? You have anything else you'd like to present?
I can keep going. No, I, I do, I appreciate everyone's time tonight, regardless of what happens here, I just have prayed all day. Let, Lord, let your will be done. Let your will be done. I'm passing away from this world, all of us are, so this is just temporary anyway. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
At eight forty-five, KCS nineteen dash oh one ones, closed to public hearings. Mr. Stone?
I make a motion that, uh, one of, I hate sitting on this committee.
Rick?
Because I'm going, I mean, when you've been out and drove them in, they've been off the drugs twenty years, they all, this, this element of tranquilizer that they taking, it's a mess of it out there, like it's stuff. You couldn't touch it with your bare hands, you couldn't touch it, burn, burn your clothes, you got them back in. Family couldn't see them. It's a mess. I, we, we see it all. Unfortunately, they give it to the kids, probably into the higher, or somebody gave it to them somewhere along the line, and we have a tremendous amount of children. It's going to the right. And, like I said, I drove by this morning, probably, it was there all day, cars all day, going in there to get that medicine, try to get off, stay off of it and all this kind of stuff. There's hundreds of them. Uh, and...
What's your motion?
My motion is, I, I, I can't make a motion to approve it, I'm gonna have to, uh, recommend to, to VCA that not be approved.
Motion, Mr. Stone, to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals to deny this special use permit is I'll second.
The motion fails for lack of second. So, we need to entertain an alternate motion.
I entertain an alternate motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Dr. Miller.
Case in KCS dash one nine, dash zero one one, I would like to recommend approval of this request to VCA.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Dr. Miller, second by Mr. Dudley, to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals to issue a special use permit for a residential addition treatment group home. Any discussions? Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll for the vote?
Mr. Motley?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Stowe? Ms. Meese? Ms. Henderson? Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
KCS. We, we, we understand, please, we got business. Case S nineteen dash oh one one, by a vote of five four, one opposed, two absent, to recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals to issue a special use permit for a residential addition treatment group home. Thank y'all for being patient with us. We appreciate the input both ways.
We're gonna do this?
We ask y'all to please leave quietly, we have other business to do with. Thank y'all. At eight forty-eight, the public hearing for a proposed amendment to Pennsylvania County Code, Chapter thirty-five, Section thirty-five dash one twenty-two, commercial kennel, veterinary animal hospital, Section thirty-five dash one seven nine, A-one special use permits, Section thirty-five dash three four seven, B-one special use permit, is open to public hearing. Ms. Hayes or Mr. Stowe?
Okay, pretty much what we're doing is adding, um, commercial kennels and veterinary animal hospitals under special uses in A-one and B-one. It's already listed as special uses and, or permitted uses in the other districts. So, it's telling, it's showing, um, in your packet, the section that will be removed and that there will be added under special uses, and we're removing the stringent setbacks of five hundred feet um, without, in an enclosed building or, um, soundproof building and the two hundred foot, um, if it is in a soundproof building. So, we had discussed it early, I think it's, um, one clinic that wants to expand and because of these stringent setbacks, they cannot.
Any discussions among the commissioners? Uh, Mr. Hunt, do I need to read all of this, any promoting, or can I just say, as presented to us?
First of all, has anybody signed up to speak?
No, no one signed.
So, you need to close the public hearing, and then?
Go to the vote.
And then you go to discussion, motion?
Right. No, no one signed up on this public hearing. So, at eight fifty- So, at eight fifty, K, the special use hearing, I mean, the, uh, public hearing on a proposed amendment to Pennsylvania County Code, chapter thirty-five, is closed. Uh, do I need to read all of this or just?
No, you just.
As presented.
I, I make a motion to recommend, uh, this change as presented to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
Mr. Dudley, you want to do that?
All right. All right, without reading all the language, I'll make the motion that is proposed and written in front of us that we make this change and send it forward to the Board of Supervisors.
I second.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, second by, uh, Mr. Haymore to, uh, send this proposal to the Board of Supervisors. Ms. Hayes, will you call the roll for the vote, please?
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mr. Haymore?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson? Ms. Meese? Mr. Stowe?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Motley?
Yes. By a vote of six four, two absent, uh, the proposed amendment to Pennsylvania County Code, chapter thirty-five, is recommended to the Board of Supervisors. Any old business? Any new business?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
What's our cases looking like for next month?
We have, um, four rezonings and one special use.
Okay.
At eight fifty-two, meeting adjourned.